Good evening, all assembled. At this time, we're called to order our meeting for September the first for the Surrey County Board of Supervisors. And at this time, we will have our invocation.
Do we have invitation today? Madam Chair, Pastor Spencer Logan.
Okay, go ahead.
To the Board of Supervisors, to all those that are present, let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you. We come before you tonight with one word, and that is gratefulness. We are grateful for the things that we so often take for granted. Those things like air, water, relationships, community, family. Lord, we just want to say, thank you. We are grateful for those things that we often take for granted. And Lord, we ask you to help us not to take each other for granted, that we will appreciate one another, and respect each other, and to continue to love one another as we go forth, to join together to be able to take care of business for our community, and for the well-being of our youth, and our families. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Logan. At this time, we will do the stand and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. Next, we have on our, we will be doing our agenda adoption. So I need a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight.
Madam Chair, I move that we would adopt the agenda that's been presented to us for our Schedule Board meeting for tonight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
They moved in second that the agenda for tonight be adopted. All those in favor, let it be known by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Any nays? You're in none. Agenda has been adopted. Thank you, Board members. At this time, the first thing on our agenda is the consent items. Can I get a motion to approve the consent items?
A move that we approve the consent items.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All of those in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Nays? You're in none. Ayes have it, motion carried. Thank you, Board members. At this time, we will have presentations, and the first presentation will be from the Virginia Association of Counties. Sir, would you come forward and?
Madam Chair, may I?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Good evening. Yes, good evening, members of the Board, and good evening to all the citizens who are here. We are very excited to have representation from the Virginia Association of Counties. Board members, I know that you all are very excited in the fact that this is the first award for Surrey County from the Virginia Association of Counties, and we are very pleased to have you here today to present, and I'm not going to steal all your thunder. Before we do that, I want to recognize our staff members, our team members who are in the audience, and that is Mr. Matt Westheimer, our building official, and Ms. Wanda Pittman, who is our permit technician, and they are here as well, so I just wanted to recognize them. And I am also looking for, there he is, Mr. Richard Douglas. I am so happy to have the Sussex County Administrator, Mr. Douglas, if you stand real quickly, who is certainly an integral partner in this award, so we are very happy to have you here, and again, welcome, and thank you so much for your submission, for submitting this on the behalf of Sussex and Surrey. So with that stated, I will let you proceed with your presentation and introduce yourself in your own way. Thank you.
Thank you Administrator Rollins, and good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Jeremy Bennett, VACO Director of Intergovernmental Affairs at the Virginia Association of Counties, and as Administrator Rollins said, it is my distinct privilege to present the VACO Achievement Awards to Surrey County tonight. I also communicated to Madam Chair and the Administrator, it was my distinct privilege to take the ferry over, enjoying a beautiful view of the James, and then have a lovely seafood dinner at your fine Surrey seafood company. So anytime I can get out of Richmond, I count it as a blessing, but equally, even more so blessed to come to Surrey. So for the benefit of your constituents, you may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties, VACO has existed since 1934 to serve and support your efforts as county officials. We support counties in many ways. One of the primary ways is our advocacy at both the state and federal government level. We also serve counties through our educational programs, member services, and communication efforts. I would add that Chair Little was a longtime member of the VACO Board of Directors and President of the Association in 2016. In 2003, VACO established our Achievement Awards Program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services and identifying programs that can serve as models for other counties to emulate. Today, I'm proud to present Surrey County with its first-ever VACO Achievement Award. Yes. So as just a little bit more context, this is VACO's 20th Annual Achievement Awards Program, and in 2022, we received 100 entries. There were 29 winners that were selected from 21 counties. It's truly a competitive process, as only 29% of the entries were selected as winners. As I said, this is Surrey County's first-ever Achievement Award, but I'm betting it's not going to be your last. And Surrey County, as the Administrator acknowledged, Surrey County did win this Achievement Award in collaboration with Sussex County, and collaboration is a vital component of the awards program, and one of our staff members will be visiting Sussex to give them also their award. So just in terms of the guidelines that our judges use in selecting winners, they want to know if the program provides an innovative solution to a problem, if it promotes intergovernmental cooperation, and if it's a model that other counties can use. Given that this is a first-of-its-kind program in the Commonwealth of Virginia, hopefully we'll be seeing more counties copying this method and improving their services going forward. I don't know if Mr. Westheimer or someone else will be able to speak a little bit more about the program, but just as a way of context, in August 2021, the Sussex and Surrey County Board of Supervisors unanimously adopted a memorandum of agreement for a shared building official inspection services, creating what is considered to be the first shared building services program between two counties in the state of Virginia. It offers an innovative solution to the delivery of services with the goal of developing shared services that combine resources, share staffing, reduce the building services operating expenses of each county, and maintain a strong customer service presence in each section's administrative office. And basically, I just wanted to say that, you know, we're thrilled that you guys took this step forward. We're thrilled to recognize you on that, and we would like to congratulate you again, congratulate you again for your excellent program, and we certainly look forward to your entry in next year's program.
The pressure's on.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So I have the award here. I don't know if it'd be, if you'd like to have someone else speak a little bit more in detail about the program, but then maybe we could just do a presentation, and it would be great to get a photo of you with the award that we can then share with our members across the Commonwealth.
Absolutely. Yes. Madam Chair, may I ask Mr. Westheimer, Mr. Douglas, if you want to come forth and just say a couple of words? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. I just want to say, you know, this is a very innovative program. I'm very proud to be a part of it. I think all counts as being a success from the, from the beginning, but I just want to note a few parts of that success. First of all, I want to thank you all, as well as the Sussex Board, for having faith in staff and having faith in this concept, and allowing us to put this together without you agreeing to the MOA and giving us your blessing, we would not be able to put it together. Second, I want to thank and acknowledge Ms. Rollins and Mr. Harrison. They were an absolute joy to work with in developing this program. You know, it truly is a 50/50 share of resources, and, you know, we look at it as a blended program, and the political boundaries are erased, and it really serves us well. So I appreciate the collaboration. It really was easy to put the program together. Then lastly, once everything's in place, you have to implement that, and, you know, I've got to say, we really hit a home run. We were very lucky to be able to bring in Matt Westheimer. He really is a, you know, a superstar in the building official world, and as you, I think many of you know, he's, he's the outgoing president with the State Building Code Association, came from the city of Williamsburg, and it just, he brought instant credibility to the program. And I know we had issues in Sussex in terms of credibility of the program, and a lot of concerns of residents and developers, and, you know, so when he came into the program, it bought an instant level of credibility, so for that, we're, you know, we're very fortunate, and, you know, we're thankful for what he's done. And I also want to note that, if you were not aware, he has been running with the ball solo on the inspection side since 1st of January. That was not the intent of the program. Hopefully, we'll have an inspector onboard very shortly and give him some help, but he has run with the ball and, you know, has had good support administratively with, you know, on the permit side, but as far as the inspections and the review, he has been doing that single-handedly. So, you know, we're very much indebted to him for taking that time and effort, and I know he works a lot of hours, so, and I get emails early in the morning from him, so. But I sent him an email at 1:37 a.m. last week, so I think I got him beat, so. But anyway, I appreciate again, support of this board, staff we have in place, and certainly Ms. Rollins and Mr. Harrison. So y'all have any questions for me?
Board members? I have none, but we are happy to have the services and Mr. Westheimer.
You may want to say a few words. I just got to say it's weird being on this side, if I'm usually ever there and so forth, but thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, this is probably the only time you will ever hear me say that the Sussex County Administrator has spoken for me, so I have nothing else to say. So, so thank you, Mr. Douglas, so very much for those words, and also thank you to the Board of Supervisors on behalf of myself and Mr. Harrison, and the team that's sitting in the audience. We do thank you for your support as well.
And would you do the picture down?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to just have everyone stand up, or have me come back?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, for the picture, we need Sussex and Mr. Westheimer.
Yes.
And his secretary.
I'm going to ask Mr. Brown to direct us in the picture.
You don't need the whole board?
The Board members. Are you going to take the picture here?
If we could do the whole board, that would be great. Just to recognize you all for all your work on this.
That's great. Okay.
Awesome. Where we going? Right here? Right here?
The photographer, Horace, over there. Thanks to everyone that participated in our awards program achievement acceptance. At this time, we have, we will have the Richard Bland, Community College, Mr. Torelli, L. Robinson, Associate Director of Government. Good evening, sir.
All right, good evening. Alrighty. All right, so to Madam Chair and the Honorable Members of the Board, and to those in person, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Terrell Robinson. I'm the Associate Director of Government Relations at Richard Bland College, and I am joined here with my colleague Jeff Brown, who is Director of Operations and Special Projects. And just a second, a little bit about me. I grew up in Ashland with my grandmother, and the interesting thing about my grandmother is she had no more than a fifth-grade education, but by the grace of God, she was able to raise a young man that would go on to Richard Bland College, one of the only junior college in the Commonwealth, and unfortunately, on my first day of college, my grandmother passed away, and I had to figure out how to navigate the educational, my educational journey without her, and I tell everyone that was my mom and dad in one package, but I'm thankful that I had a loving community at Richard Bland College that lifted me up, and while I was there, I had, I had an individual that did not look like me, that saw something in me, and he told me to apply to William &amp; Mary, and I went on to the College of William &amp; Mary, and I graduated with a public policy degree, and after that, I went on to work for Mayor Stony in Richmond, where I've been for the last five years, and I'm very thankful that my alma mater, Richard Bland College, decided to give me a call and give me a chance to come back and work for them. And so with that, alongside with Jeff Brown, like I said, my colleague, we have been working on building our Government Relations Department, and so what we've done is we've put together a PowerPoint presentation that highlights some of our innovative programs and partnerships, and I've also given Ms. Rollins folders from us, which has our Dual Enrollment Packet, our Quick Guide Packet. It also has information on our Pecan Festival, which we hope to see you all at if you can make it on October 22nd. And so without further ado, I will go along with our PowerPoint. So Richard Bland College, is it going to change for you all? All right, give me one second.
Call him, Mr. Brown. Call him, Mr. Brown.
Let's see. We got it. We got it working. Here we go. Wrong slide. So Richard Bland College, we were established in 1960 by the General Assembly as a branch of William &amp; Mary, and so right now, we are the only two-year junior college, or really the only two-year college in the Commonwealth, still governed by a four-year institution. So what we've been working on at the college is a new model for higher education, so as the Commonwealth's only selective two-year residential junior college, we have been embarking on some strategic partnerships that would increase our ROI, which is our return on investment, as you see these four programs I'll go deeper into, and so that all adds up to us being an institution that is nimble and flexible to meet the demands and needs of not only our community, but the region. Here are a little bit of our core values, and as you see, in the middle, we have our student-focused. Everything that we do at the college, we are focused on our students, and I think what makes it so great is that we have this friendly family environment, this small-knit place where you can truly grow and build your confidence. So here's just a glance of the college, and just a little bit of our demographics, and I think it's interesting to note that we, that a third of our students are first-generation college students, just like myself. Over half of our students are students of color, and I think what really sets us apart is that 83% of our professors are full-time. So if you look at other two-year colleges, a part of the community college system, most are adjuncts being filled in. We have sports at Richard Bland, which makes it, makes an exciting campus. We just added women's basketball this year. We also have women's track and a slew of other sports. Something that really sets us apart, we have an international student population on campus. We welcomed over two dozen international students to campus this fall from all different countries, and once again, this adds to the, just the vibrancy of campus and adding people with different lived experiences. We have, we have officially broken ground on our Academic Innovation Center. This will go off from our library, with 20,000-plus square feet for more learning, research, and training. And so as we look at the future higher ed, I want to talk about some of the trends we have. So from our student clearinghouse data, U.S. student enrollment has been declining for the past decade, and so what we found out is that high schoolers are realizing that as minimum wage has increased, that there's no, as if they're looking to get income, there's no real need to hop into college right away. We have less high school students, so colleges and universities are fighting over a smaller number of students, and then also, we look at the cost with time, the time and the debt that it would cost to actually get an education. And so here's something pretty exciting for us at the college. The Richmond Times-Dispatch this year came out with an article highlighting enrollment with elite Virginia colleges and those that are struggling, and as you can see, there's some notable four-year colleges up there that are dipping. For example, Radford's enrollment has sank by 23%. VCU has been sliding, and even two-year community colleges have dropped by 14%. But Richard Bland College, if you see at the bottom, we bucked the trend, we're growing by 21% in large part by dual enrollment. And so through dual enrollment, this is a great program where high school students can obtain college credits or even work towards getting their associate's degrees. There are three ways that they can do it, virtually, so we've been tapping into the homeschool market, allowing a lot of students to take courses through us. We also have on-campus, we have high school students that sit in classes with other college students and take their course, or they can do it at their high school campus while their teacher has the credentials to teach the course, and they never have to leave their high school campus. We've got GPS. This is, this is something that's extremely great. I think that separates us as well. So through our Guided Pathways for Success Program, each student that comes into Richard Bland College, they get a learner mentor. This is someone that follows them their entire learning journey at the college, so they know when they're going to class, they know when they're failing, they know when they're doing their homework, and what they will do is step in and provide interventions to help them succeed and get to the next level, and with this support, we get more degrees, more graduates, lower costs, fewer credits are taken, and greater earning potential. So here's a unique partnership we have. It's called the University Center. So in partnership with Virginia State University and Virginia Wesleyan University, we will be the only two-year college in the Commonwealth that will have the option of offering four-year degrees right here on campus, and so this will be an extremely great benefit for our students that come through, because what we find out, a lot of students, even like myself, you get comfortable with the environment, and you would love to stay a little longer, and so now we will be providing that option. And what makes it better is the price that we charge. So as you look at this chart, you can see that, for example, Virginia Wesleyan is $22,000 plus for just tuition. So we worked out an agreement that we will be charging RBC, RBC's price for tuition. So we will be charging $4,100 for their third and fourth year for them to receive a four-year degree from Virginia Wesleyan, and that, the same thing applies for Virginia State University. So that is a steal. Something else interesting, and another great partnership is our FAME program. This is our, we have the first chapter for the Federation of Advanced Manufacturing Education. There's about three dozen chapters across the country. Right now, we have the only chapter in the Commonwealth, and so what this is, is it's an earn-and-learn model. So students will go to class, go to our classes for two days out of the week, and for the other three days of the week, they will work with one of these 12 companies that you see on the screen, and this allows for a student to pay down their debt while being in college, and also allows for them to gain invaluable work experience. So by the time they graduate, they have no debt, and they have a job, and we're talking about average of $55,000 plus. And so right now, we're running into an issue. We have more students than we have slots, and so we're looking to expand to get more companies involved in this program. So we have been working on our innovation park at the college, and so this is working on our master plan with Virginia Gateway Region. We have found 185 acres of land that's been underutilized, and what we want to do is have public-private partnerships to bring smart economic development to the college. This is going to bring internships for our students and also benefit the college, and so here's a very happy picture of the RBC team. So last Wednesday, we were at the Governor's Mansion for an announcement, and so what we did is we announced a partnership with the drone company called Drone Up, and so they have gained and earned a $500 million contract with Walmart to provide delivery service to all the Walmarts across the country, and so they decided to partner with us to build their first training facility on our campus, and they are building on it and finishing it up as we speak. And so once again, this is a picture of our team looking very happy with the Governor, and our President is in black, President Debbie Sido. And so here's a picture of the drone. This is an example of what the drone would do, fly above homes and have your package drop safely at your doorstep. So you think about Uber, getting your food delivered, you can have a drone safely drop down groceries, other items. And so here's a picture of our campus map, and where the, where the red square is, that's where we're building the facility right now, and it's pretty much finished. And here is a picture, so the, I guess, the building, where it says "Take Off Landing in the Hub," this is what the structure looks like, and it's, like I said, it's pretty much almost completed on campus right now. And so our last great partnership is our Virginia School of Technical and Professional Studies. This is another partnership with Virginia State University, so we are targeting our non-traditional students, those that are 25 and up that may have some college credits but may have not completed a degree. So through this online program, we will be offering micro-credentials, credentials, and a pathway to get an associate's degree. And at our Foundation Board meeting yesterday, I mentioned what would be great about it is just think about a student and a parent coming in at once. So you have a student that comes to Richard Bland College to work on their associate's degree, and let's say their parent may have a credit or two, they can hop into our virtual school, and so now you have a family that is all lifting at once, advancing and getting more education and opening up more doors of opportunities. So I conclude with, the college is evolving into a new model for higher education by distinguishing itself through innovative partnerships that produce the best educational returns on investments for its students. And with that, I thank you all for having me this, or this evening, and I'll take any questions if there are.
Thank you for coming and sharing with us. That's very exciting.
Thank you.
And we are on YouTube, so hopefully, those who are listening may be able to, you know, have gained some knowledge of where they can get an education at a, ooh, very nice place.
I hope so too.
Board members' questions?
I hope you all will be able to attain some more companies for the students.
Yes.
Tell Kristi K. I said hello.
Okay, I will. Any other? Any other questions? Or comments?
Not a question, just, I wanted to say, that was very exciting. I'm, I'm actually not a graduate of Richard Bland. I attended Richard Bland between my tenth and eleventh grade year of high school. It was an enrichment program, math and technology. And, you know, I even look at the pictures and I think, wow, I know nineteen eighty was a long time ago. But I look at the pictures and I think, wow, you all really are doing great things. And, and I have heard through the years, as my students attended Richard Bland, about the athletic program, about the new buildings, the new programs that were being offered, the housing. Am I correct? There's on-campus housing. And again, in nineteen eighty, that was not an option. And I will even give a shout-out to the Pecan Festival. You are correct. That is not to be missed.
Yes.
Not to be missed.
What was that date?
October twenty-second. And so in your packet, on the left-hand side, there's two.
So I just want to say kudos to Richard Bland College for doing great things.
Thank you, ma'am.
So thank you so much.
All right, thank you all.
I'm not hearing any, so I think.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Be safe.
All right.
You're welcome to stay if you want to.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, and gotta give a shout-out to Ms. Rollins. We talked on the phone a lot, and we have emailed back and forth to make sure I could be here. So thank you.
All right, board members, at this time, under unfinished business, we will have Ms. Rollins to.
Yes, okay. Yes, there are two items for your consideration this evening on unfinished business. And board members, both of these items were actually discussed in your work session. The first item pertains to the Water Utility System Master Plan, and it is a proposal from Bowman Consulting Group to provide planning and engineering services for the Water Utility Master Plan project. You do have the information before you. The cost of the services to be provided is fifty, excuse me, I'm sorry, is eighty thousand dollars. Excuse me, fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars is the cost. This was included in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three CIP. So the funds have, were appropriated by the board during the budget process. So the ask for this evening is to allow the county administrator to approve the attached proposal that you received from Bowman Engineering in the amount of fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars to begin the county's water utility system master plan, as discussed by Mr. Wade in the work session.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Board members, are there any questions or concerns or ready to vote? To authorize the administration to disperse that to Wingate? Any questions?
To Bowman Consulting.
Madam Chair, I move that we would authorize the county administrator to approve the attached proposal to Bowman Engineering for the amount of fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars for the county water utility system, the master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Been moved in second. Board members, all in favor? Let it be known by the sound of aye.
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 Aye. Nays? Hearing none? Motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Rollins.
You're welcome. The next item, unfinished business, at your last Board of Supervisors meeting, we had representation from Wingate to discuss with the board regarding an auxiliary reassessment to be conducted in two thousand and twenty-three. This information that's before you is the actual contract. Mr. Hefty worked with Mr. Thomas to finalize the contract for your consideration this evening. The amount of the proposal is one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You do have the scope of the work in addition to the contract and the said-to attachments. Unless you all have any questions for myself and/or Mr. Jonathan Jenkins, our Commissioner of Revenue is here this evening as well, and Mr. Hefty, who worked with Mr. Thomas on this. The ask for tonight is to authorize the, myself to approve the contract with Wingate in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And the funding source for this project, because we had determined in previous conversations that this was not an item that was budgeted, that is something that was brought to our attention by the commissioner based on the potential revenue loss, based on the ratio that has dipped to eighty-eight percent, and the county's loss of significant revenue in public service. So that is the ask for this evening, board members.
Board members, you have heard the request. Are there any questions, concerns? If not, we'll entertain a motion to authorize the county administrator to approve the contract with Wingate in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Have a motion.
Madam Chair, based upon our prior discussion and the imbalance that we currently face, I move that we would authorize the county administrator to approve the contract with Wingate in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for funding services for the project is fund balance.
Well, we have the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor? Let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Nays? Hearing none? Ayes have it. Motion carried, and we thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Elliott, I just wanted to make sure that that motion read to appropriate the monies from fund balance.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next, on our agenda, we have appointments.
Yes, Madam Chair, there is an appointment from the District Nineteen Community Services Board. The current representative from Sari County, who has served, Frances Randolph, would no longer be serving, and the director from the District Nineteen Community Services Board had asked that the board consider an appointment to serve on this board for the community. You do have the letter in here from Ms. Lisa Newby, who's the executive assistant for the community, for District Nineteen Community Services Board. Mrs. Frances Randolph served her three-year term, three three-year terms for a total of nine years. So she has been a faithful member, yes, on this board. So at this time, there was a request for a new appointment. I do know they have a meeting, I believe, that's upcoming in September. I can say that I reached out to Ms. Stone to ask whether or not she knew someone who served in this capacity, who knew about District Nineteen Mental Services Board. And there was only one name that we have for, to present to you all tonight if you want to consider that representative. And I am looking for that person's name. And Ms. Pierce, did you recall? And I thought I had. Thank you. That person's name is Ms. Velma Shaw, who has agreed to serve if the board is selected to serve. This is an appointment that's not district-specific, so there's anyone in the community can serve. So if it's your pleasure, Velma Shaw was just given to us as a name who can serve on the District Nineteen Community Services Board.
Board members, you have heard the request and the name. She has agreed to serve. And so Chair would entertain a motion to appoint Mrs. Shaw to the District Nineteen Board.
So move, Madam Chair.
Been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor? Let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Nays? Hearing none? Motion carried, and thank Mrs. Shaw for agreeing to serve on the District Nineteen Board. I have attended those meetings, and they, you learn a lot. All right, next.
Yes, Planning Commission. So Board of Supervisors members, you all are good with most of your Planning Commission members. There is only one member that is slated for a term to expire on June thirtieth, right, two thousand and twenty-two, and that is from the, from, excuse me, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and that is from the Bacon's Castle District. And I believe that the Planning Department did reach out to Mr. Brock to ask whether or not he wanted to continue to serve. And we're sharing with you, Mrs. Little, that he agreed to do so.
Okay.
So it's the board's pleasure on Mr. Brock.
Board, you have heard the requests from my district to have Mr. Brock, who has agreed to continue to serve, to be reappointed to the Planning Commission. So I would entertain a motion, if you would, to have Mr. Brock reappointed to the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, so move on, on the information given by the chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? Let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Nays? Hearing none? Ayes have it. Mr. Brock will continue to serve as the Bacon's Castle Planning Commission member for Bacon's Castle. Thank you.
And board members, also, what has been provided to you is a list for you all to continue to consider appointments. We do have some vacancies on the Board of Historic and Architectural Review in the Sari District, Carsley District, and the Dendron District, and two vacancies on the Highway Transportation Commission, which is from the Dendron District. So board members, you may not have any names on tonight, but we just wanted to bring this to your attention so that you can be thinking about those citizens who you may want to appoint to serve on these various boards and commissions.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, what was the districts, again, that you stated?
For the Board of Historic and Architectural Review, it is the Sari District, and it's the Carsley District, and one vacancy in the Dendron District. And on the Highway Transportation, it is the Dendron District, so, okay.
And Bacon's Castle has one. Eddie Brock.
Yeah, that one we've taken care of tonight.
Okay.
The Planning Commission, yes. And then the Social Services Board, which, as well, okay, from the Carsley District.
All right, and Ms. Ellis? Vacancy with Social Services.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Monahan? We'll note that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Rollins, Madam Chair, may I ask you a question? Ms. Rollins, do we have the contact numbers for any of these that we're missing and that have expired? That we can maybe contact them to see if they want to? Can I ask, are we sending that out?
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Calhoun, for reminding us to do that. We can certainly get that out to the board.
Right, thank you.
Consider if they want to be reappointed. Thank you. And also, as a reminder as well, that the boards and commissions' application has been discussed before, and I believe that information is available. If not, we can make sure that it's available on our website just to have a interested pool of citizens who are interested in serving on the various boards and commissions.
Any other questions, board members? If not, we will move on to county administrators' report.
Yes, ma'am. So board members, there is one item I want to bring to y'all's attention this afternoon. As you all know, this is September first, which is the first Thursday in the month. And I was on the call later today with Dr. Sims, Division Superintendent. If I can point your attention to a letter that's inside your black folder. This item is a late item, so it did not make your agenda. Yes, ma'am. It is a request from the Sari County Public Schools for a categorical transfer. Do you have it, board members?
Yes.
Do you have it? Okay. You can have mine, sir.
You have yours?
No. It's right there, right in front of you. You can have mine.
I found it.
Hey, Mr. Calhoun, mine until he reaches. Yes, board members, so again, you know, in speaking with Dr. Sims, this is the first Thursday. So it kind of threw, you know, off in terms of the September first being the first Thursday. So in full disclosure, you know, they thought they had next Thursday to get this to us, and I explained to her, no, we would not be here on next Thursday for a board meeting. So she apologized. The school board has already approved this. So what you do have in front of you is a request for a, just a categorical transfer. There is no increase in the budget for the school system. The request before you is in three categories: people transportation, operation and maintenance, and technology. Due to the availability of grant funds, the school system was able to make some facility upgrades that ordinarily would be operations and maintenance expenditures due to temporary repairs. As a result, it has decreased the amount they needed in the operation and maintenance categories because of the grant funds that were available. And the technology and transportation categories experienced some increases in the year. So therefore, they are requesting a categorical transfer as shown below. And you can see those figures there. Again, no change in the bottom line. This is something that typically the school board does ask for in September, after the end of the fiscal year. And one of the reasons, board members, why they typically ask for it in September is because we are gearing up for our audit at the end of September and October, and we want these categorical transfers to be reflected when the auditors get the financial reports. So Dr. Sims, they had opened house, so she cannot be here this evening. So I had asked her that I would bring this forth to the pleasure of the board for their consideration on this evening.
Board members, you have heard the requests coming from the school board and the school superintendent. What is your pleasure? Do you have any questions? No one's here from the schools, but as usual, we have done this through the years, so. If you're okay, then we would entertain a motion to approve the transfer of the funds.
Madam Chair, if there be no questions from the board members, I move that the request for the category of transfer will be approved.
I have a second. Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? Let it be known by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Hearing none? Ayes have it. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a presentation underneath the county administrators' report. And I am pleased to have here Sheriff Turner is here this evening in addition to Ms. Kelly Coons, who is our Emergency Communications Manager. And I am going to ask Sheriff Turner if you want to come up first and just say a few words in preparation of Ms. Coons coming up to give her presentation to the board.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Ms. Rollins, Mr. Hefty, and all who are assembled here tonight. It gives us pleasure to be here once again on this, on this first Thursday to present what our other divisions within the sheriff's office. And we have, like Ms. Rollins said, Ms. Kelly Coons, who oversees our dispatch operations at our dispatch center and who is doing, by all means, a fantastic job. She's, we actually just had our audit of our V-Cent and all this sort of stuff, and we passed that audit, which Kelly oversees, and it was done with flying colors. And so she gonna give her presentation on all the operations there, and just sit back and see the wonderful things that's been done in our nine-one-one dispatch center.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Kelly, come on up.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, citizens assembled. I do have my presentation on here. I guess I can just stick it in here. Not sure. I do have my presentation on here. I guess I can just stick it in here. Not sure. Thank you. Okay, good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and give you guys the annual report for Sari County Emergency Communications for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022. In fiscal year 22, the 911 Center answered roughly 18,000 administrative calls for service. Some of those calls were emergency calls in nature. Also, in fiscal year 22, the 911 Center answered approximately 3,400 911 calls. Six and a half percent of those calls were abandoned calls. And those abandoned calls, they have to be redialed to make contact with a caller, to make sure that everything's okay and there is no emergency. We also completed our Emergency Medical Dispatch implementation. July 21st, we went live with that software using Emergency Medical Dispatch protocols. They've been used on approximately 762 and counting medical calls during the fiscal year since our go-live. Grant reimbursement of $46,540.80 from the Office of Emergency Medical Services has been completed and credited back to the county. The Office of Emergency Medical Services accreditation requirement for that grant was submitted in May of 2022. We have yet to hear back for the results. They are currently short-staffed. I followed with, followed up with them two weeks ago. They're currently short-staffed on getting those processed. And currently, 95% of our dispatch staff is EMD certified. We had a couple new hires come in after the implementation. We currently have one in training now, so we will be at 100%. We currently have 100% of our dispatch staff is CPR certified, which is a requirement in order to use this EMD protocol. 95% of dispatch staff is trained in tourniquet application. We partnered with Air Care Eagle, one of our newest helicopter companies. They put on a Stop the Bleed class to get them certified in that. 85% of the dispatch staff is currently trained to administer Narcan for drug overdoses. We are also working on a state mandated project for the Marcus Alert. It's pursuant to the state's project on tackling mental health. Sari 911 recently met those requirements to create a voluntary database to house specific information provided by the public to aid in safer, more informed responses. We worked collaboratively with county's IT department to develop a submission form and access to that form on the county's website. It's currently promoted on the county's website and their Facebook page. We do have flyers that were available at National Night Out to those that were interested in contributing. I also recently put some at the sheriff's office, and there's also some at the court desk, if anyone is interested. Also, if there are none left, you can contact me directly at the communications center, and I can definitely help you with that. Our current goal is to circulate those flyers to citizens by way of postal services. So we're looking into how many flyers we're gonna need and how much it's gonna cost to do that and get the word out there for individuals. And if anyone's interested, as we speak, the QR code is right here to the form. You can scan that with your phone. It will take you directly to the form, and you can fill out that information, submit it, and it comes directly to me. And all of that information is 100% voluntary and 100% confidential. It's only used when someone's in crisis and they, they need the responders to know what's going on. We are also currently in the midst of our Next Generation 911 Project. Very exciting. Existing 911 technology is being stretched to its limit as modern communications continue to evolve. Current experiment, equipment requires updates or replacement in order to fit needs of modern America. Currently, Sari 911 received $641,017.87 in the year 2020 to fund this transition. Those funds continue to roll over as the project continues to progress. July 2021, Verizon completed their site inspection of the Emergency Operations Center to move forward with the fiber installation. Everything looked good. We went ahead and got scheduled for that. In July 2022, exactly a year later, they completed the fiber and equipment installation at the Emergency Operations Center. There's some photos there of their equipment. It's gonna be the big gray box on the bottom. They were able to help us with some spatial issues that we had in the server room, so that was fantastic. They worked really well with us on that. Let's see. The call handling equipment provider that we currently contract with, Carousel Industries, they've supplied all of the equipment and the firewall essential to this call handling equipment upgrade and the Ethernet connectivity. This is going to take everything IP and digital and very secure. We are also currently in the midst of a very exciting radio communication system upgrade. And I would really like to extend my appreciation to you all for everything that you've done to help push that forward. So, last year, we began partnering with end-user agencies within the county to develop, implement, and maintain a state-of-the-art radio communication system. It's going to be a digital simulcast system that will greatly increase area-wide coverage. And lastly, we have staffing and retention. Sari County Sheriff's Office Dispatch is 95% staffed. There's only one vacancy, and we are currently reviewing applicants for that. Retention is up from fiscal year 2020. And our fiscal year 23 goal is to explore new ways to recruit, explore job fairs, career days at the schools, spreading the word at sheriff's office events. And we have a great team, so if anyone's interested in joining us, please do. And thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Board members, questions?
I don't have any questions. I, I just, I wanna commend you and your, and your team for the service that you give to the community in situations of crisis. One of the slides that you had put up, it showed that you had, I believe, it was 34,000 911 calls in '22. Is that correct?
That would be a total of non-emergency and emergency calls. Yes, sir.
Thank you for a job well done for the citizens of Sari. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the support.
I actually think we're probably ahead of the game with, compared to some other communities, so very thankful.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair. Yes, I just wanted to state that you all aware that there was an agreement that has been in place for a couple of years between the county and the sheriff for E91 communications. And that agreement called for a collaborative effort between the county and the sheriff and dispatch. And I just wanted to say that Mrs. Kelly Coons has been an employee of the county underneath that agreement. And I have certainly enjoyed working with her. And as stated before, as Sheriff Turner stated, she has done a very fine job. You know, the fact that, you know, some of these, these, these workload indicators and things that we are progressing from a technology standpoint as we're, and we have come light years from where we were in Emergency Communications a few years ago. So I just want to thank Sheriff Turner, and also thank you for just the collaborative effort that it took to make this work. And with this stated, I don't have the agreement before me tonight, board members, but Sheriff Turner can speak to this. But we want to recommend a future change in that agreement is because we do not need that MOU any longer. And part of that reason is because the Emergency Communications Manager, as an employee of the county, should be an employee of the sheriff department. And we're all in agreeance that that change needs to happen based on a number of reasons. So again, that speaks volumes to the communication that has happened to make this work. And this has been a department that has definitely deserved their kudos because being in emergency dispatch is a tough job. And Ms. Kelly has, again, has, and sheriff has to work our retention rate. That is just excellent. We have always had problems with retaining dispatchers, so we are very pleased. And that speaks volumes to the leadership, so we do appreciate that. So I just wanted to share that we can bring that back to you at another time, so. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, in agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes.
Okay, we're moving along. We're moving along, Mr. Calhoun.
You're not.
Okay, okay, we're, we're moving, okay.
Oh, County Refuge.
Yes, so we do have another item underneath County Administrator's Report, we're two items, and that pertains to County Refuge's collection site schedule. Board members, Mr. Derek Moore, who is the sanitation supervisor, had come before you at a previous board meeting and had talked about the challenges and accomplishments and all this associated with the four various solid waste convenience sites that we have in the county. What you have before you, as he stated before, is a recommendation to do what other surrounding communities are doing to allow us ample time to maintain the sites and do additional training. And that would be to close the sites one day a week. And that would be on Wednesdays of, of, of each week beginning on October the first, which 30 days will allow us ample time to be able to get out the media notices, the public notices, and of course, to notify the citizens. Again, Mr. Moore is here. If you have any questions, raise your hand, Mr. Moore. But again, it will give us time to be able to do the site maintenance and also to be able to train staff. The attendants who do work at those sites would not be impacted in terms of their hours worked because they will still be at work on those Wednesdays doing training and doing some site maintenance. So the recommendation, recommendation on this evening is to ask the board for approval to move along with scheduling, excuse me, and giving a new schedule to the solid waste and convenience sites, having them being closed on Wednesdays. And again, this is consistent with the information you see here in Alawak County, where their sites are closed on Wednesdays. In addition to, Sussex County operates six and a half days on Sundays, and South Hampton County only operates a four-day schedule as well. So that is the request on this evening.
I have a question. So what's the, moving forward, why is, why is that Wednesday chosen to be selected for it to be closed?
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Is that every Wednesday moving forward?
Effective October 1st.
Do you have a timeline of when it's gonna be completed?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
What was your question?
I was just wondering, like, so Wednesday is the, the date to be selected for closure?
Yeah, that's, that's the least trash day. The trash started to die down on Wednesday. And we still be pulling trash out the sites. But it'll give us the opportunity for site maintenance or group training, whatever, on that Wednesday.
But that means the county won't be able to, I mean, to dump their trash on Wednesday?
On Wednesday.
Moving forward.
Five days, six days a week is a Wednesday.
I don't want, you know, I don't wanna sound negative, but I think county needs to be able to dump trash, especially during the week. So that's just my concern.
Well, you got four days during the week to dump it.
Some people, you know, working is hard, you know, like, I, I, I just, you know, I just have a concern with that. I don't know. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. As a citizen, I wanna be able to dump my trash, you know, Monday through Friday, Saturdays too, if I can. And Sundays if I can too. I mean, it's just hard for some people, you know.
If you got six days a week and one day, I mean, y'all be doing some of them six days. You open 10 hours a day, six days a week, and trash start to slack up on.
I'm just thinking about the citizens. I mean, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't know what.
One thing, still, the, you know, we dump trash six days a week. We still gonna be out there. But once we got rid of the vendor in Dendrum, that's trash we have to pull ourselves. And instead of one box coming out there one day a week, we putting five boxes out there a day, you know? So it makes a difference, you know?
Okay, and the other? Yeah, the board.
I'm just kinda wondering, Mr. Moore, if you can ask, you know, that's 52 days out of the year that the, the sites won't be open. And for eight hour, or for 10 or 12 hours when they're normally open. What type of site maintenance and training would take that, that?
Well, it's not, it's not a, nothing planned for that day, but if I want somebody to come in and grade or whatever, I don't have to search, close the sites then because they already down, you know what I'm saying? And then another thing to it, if we have a group training right now, I have to be at the site when the people change shift to talk to, to them at the same time.
And would, would a possible opportunity to look at maybe one day a month and, and see if that would work? To do your grading and?
That'd be, that'd be just confusion for somebody. If they close, if all the sites close on the same day, it, it eliminate a lot of confusion. If you open it one day a month, you know, after it was open this day, after it was open that day.
No, 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 I'm talking about closing all of them one day a month.
Not every week.
Not every week. I'm just, I'm trying to. I'm trying to understand what, for 52 days, and, you know, I don't understand.
You can do a lot of different things that we need to do, or grading, or training, or whatever we need to do.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna speak, sometimes when I get home, the dump is closed from work. And, you know, I would like to be able to know if we could extend the hours for the dump sometimes. I mean, I know that's probably asking a lot, but to close it one day a week, I, I, you know, I just, I think that's concerns for the citizens. I just, I'm just speaking on behalf of, you know, on the citizens.
I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, so.
Any other board members?
Would, just a question. Do you think that you could get the training and the maintenance that is, that is needed? Because I can understand your viewpoint as well, with not doing it every week, but maybe, like Mr. Calhoun suggested, maybe one Wednesday out of the month, maybe the first Wednesday out of the month, the site will be closed. I, I don't wanna overload your personnel as well. I understand maintenance need to be taken care of, but is, can any compromise be made here?
Yeah, I think that one day would just cause confusion for us when the site open and when it's not open, you know? That one day, I'm gonna just leave them open if that's the case. I would just leave them open.
You're gonna close it one day a week, and it's Wednesdays, why couldn't you, and it's published, and it's out there for everybody to see, the signage and, and on the website. Why can't we say?
First Wednesday.
Every first, or second, or third, or fourth Wednesday of the month. No matter what date, what actual number date it is, everybody knows it's the first, second, third, or fourth Wednesday. It's closed, period.
Board, yeah, Mr. Moore, thank you so much for answering those questions from the board. And, you know, the recommendation, again, board members, you know, just to support what Mr., and we certainly do appreciate the feedback from the board members as you all's decision to make in terms of this. And that's why we brought it to your attention for your discussion on this evening. Again, one of the reasons why we thought that it would be best to just do it on one day and we can certainly reconsider some of the options that have been presented before us on this evening is to be consistent with, you know, those localities who do close that one day a week and provides opportunity for the staff to, you know, in addition to the site maintenance, in the, in addition to the site training as well, to be able to, you know, have, you know, some, not all, you know, work with those four hours, but also just some, some time to, to give them a, a little rest for periods from that. So at the same token, Mr. Moore, I think what the pleasure of the board is, is for us to reconsider the full one day, you know, each week, and perhaps come up with some other options. So we can, if it's a pleasure of the board, if you all will allow us to discuss those options internally, and then we can bring those back forth to the board for some consideration.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for the good job you're doing. Yes, thank you. Opiate?
Yes. So the next item on the agenda, it pertains to the opioid settlement. If you all remember, board members, you all had to pass a resolution for the county's participation in this settlement. The request that we have received is a request from, excuse me, yes. Thank you. Yes, Madam Chair, board members, the request that we have received is a request from actually Prince George County. Prince George County is in the process of examining how it's using its share of opioid settlement funds to provide the most impact to its community. They have reached out to not just Sari, but they've also reached out to Hopewell City to determine whether or not the county would be interested in pooling our funds so that we can best serve the community with these opiate funds. We, as Sari, being of our population size, of course, is not receiving a large sum of monies as some of the other jurisdictions are. We did receive our first installment of $2,358. And also, the Riverside Criminal Justice Academy has also made a recommendation to, to, to Prince George County as well, in terms of making the huge impact. That's something that we, as a board and as a community, this is one of the issues that I don't believe impacts us as much as some other issues. So, the opportunity to be able to take this twenty-three fifty-eight and to be able to pool it with some other localities. And we know that we are members of the Riverside Criminal Justice Agency to make a greater impact. So, all the request is tonight, is just authorize myself to proceed with a joint agreement that Prince George County will be bringing forward, asking us to pool our funds. So, that is the request this evening. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Board members, do you have questions?
Ms. Rollins, that's just to review the MOU, to review the MOU from Prince George, the draft?
No, for me to proceed with letting them know that we're okay with them drafting the MOU to bring back for our consideration, that's right. They'll be the ones who are actually going to be paying. I didn't want them to, to do it and you all say no. So, just want to get that authorization, okay?
But this also includes us. You said we've been given twenty-three hundred dollars. That would include us submitting, giving our funds to Prince George County?
For them to be able to correct. And those details, Mr. Elliott, would be worked out in the MOU. But again, the, the funds, from what I understand, would actually be going to the Riverside Criminal Justice Agency. Prince George County would be serving as the fiscal agent. And that's, and this is the first settlement. We probably get another one for the exact same amount. Nobody knows the exact amount that's coming. But again, our contribution, excuse me, our settlement is, is probably going to be minimum of not more than twice this amount, from what I understand.
What is, what is the option if we do not agree to this? We have these fundings here. And my, my concern is that we, we in a lot of agreements with different jurisdictions, but we don't get the same services that they get.
That's a very good question. The options, Mr. Elliott, you know, we can certainly reach out. As a matter of fact, I, I made that attempt earlier this week, is to reach out to the District Nineteen Community Services Board here to see whether or not, what programs they may have in place to, to deal with this. There could be some, of course, guidelines associated with it. I know it is as to the specific uses of how the money can be used. So that, you know, whomever gets the funds, whether or not it's an agency within Sari County, need to make sure that those guidelines are by, by as pertains to the use of these funds.
So, any other questions, board members? What I'm hearing is that we need more information before the board make any determination of whether it wants to do that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. From the pleasure of your board members.
Is there a timeline on this that, that we have to make a decision on?
I can, that's another good question. I did receive, let me just check there real quick, some information earlier today stating that they do have an upcoming meeting in September whereby this item will come up from discussion. So, I do think they wanted to be able to have some feedback from the City of Hopewell and Sari as pertains to our participation in this. So, if there's a timeline involved, Mr. Elliott, I think they wanted to be able to have this for their upcoming meeting. And I know that Sheriff Turner, Mr. Davis, and so forth are part of the Riverside Criminal Justice Academy. Has this come up in you all's discussion previously, Sheriff Turner? The opiate settlement funding and for the Riverside Criminal Justice Academy to be able to utilize these funds to make an impact in the member jurisdictions? Okay, got you, okay.
That will be given, sir, next month in October, when we discuss it next month.
Okay. When is that meeting day? Is it after the board of supervisors date in October? Okay, okay, okay. It's a pleasure of the board for, to this, to explore what other options could be available if we decide not to pool the funds? And if we have time in October, at the October meeting, to bring it back for that information? Is that what the, the pleasure of the board is?
Well, I would like to know, the sheriff is here. His suggestion, Sheriff Turner, would this be? I, I don't have a problem with it going together, but is it amount of money that you need for Sari? Are we having a, an issue, a large issue with this situation? And do you have funds in your budget for Sari? And that if we combine these funds, because this would go to give, to be given to the persons who are housed at the Riverside Regional? But I mean, when you, I mean, you could have Mr. Joe Blow out here right now need a pill. I'm just saying, you know, so would you have in your, you know, in your presence, those pills? If you're going to give all the money and put it jointly, would also the community still have funds to buy the pills?
Yes, and the Norcan and that sort of thing, yes. What they do, they kind of spread it out to all our districts. We get, we get a lot of it now because of funds, other funds that have been given to, to the region to help combat that opiate epidemic. So, we're going, like I said, we're going to talk about it more. And far as from the regional approach on October, so that's about all I can really say about it. But we're going to talk more about it on, in that meeting, I think it's on the thirteenth of October. So, it's about to extend.
And also, board members, the amount of funding that we getting, although it certainly can, you know, be impactful to a person or persons who, you know, benefit from it. But in terms of just the accountability from a agency, you have to think about this well for that amount of money, the accountability that's involved in, in that. So, that's just another reason why sometimes it just makes sense to sort of kind of pool the resources. Even though they are going to propose to go to the Riverside Criminal Justice Academy, Sari County is a member jurisdiction of that agency. So, there is still local benefit. It's just a matter of, rather than trying to figure out what to do with twenty-three hundred dollars, they're trying to be more impactful by pooling all the monies together to make a greater impact in the various member jurisdictions.
I didn't, I didn't have an issue with that. My, my main concern was if we were to go forward with this, would Sari County still be provided the services that we needed? Because I know a lot of times when you pair, we're just fortunate we have a good situation with Sussex. But when you pair with these regions, you got to make sure that you are covered as well. That's, that was my only concern, to make sure we are covered. If we, if you feel as a sheriff that we will be covered by, by pairing with this region, then I have a problem with it. I'm just looking out for the citizens of Sari.
Um, yes, sir, I do. And like I said, I come with attorney, Mr. Davis, he's actually the president of our board. So, he actually oversee, see a lot of it. So, so I, I truly feel it would be beneficial.
That was my only concern.
Okay, board members, the sheriff has answered all questions. Do I have a motion?
If we, if we go forward with the MOU and we don't like it, I mean, can we back out? I mean, I'm just trying to look at all the options.
Yes, the, the ask this evening is to let them go ahead and prepare the MOU and to bring it back to us for our consideration. Okay, so that is asked. So, if you, once you get it, right, Mr. Calhoun, that you may elect not to do it, but it's not a done deal, is to say yes, that we agree to be a part of the MOU and we can bring it back to the boards for you all's, excuse me, final consideration.
Madam Chair, in light of the hefty conversation and discussion, I move that we would authorize a county administrator to proceed with a joint agreement with Prince George for the use of the opioid settlement funds to bring back to us the MOU for our approval.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor? Let it be known by the sign of aye. Aye, nays, yuree nunn, ayes have it, so done. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff Turner. I'm glad you was here to answer those questions.
Yes, so am I.
And board members, just a couple of quick things, and this would conclude my report for tonight. But inside your black folder, there was a couple of things I do want to bring to your attention. I had already spoken to you all at a previous meeting regarding the need to be able to look at legislative agenda items that you all want to bring forth to support those things that are significant to Sari County. I had mentioned that Mrs. Little, you had attended one of the Vaco Regional meetings. And these are those, Mr. Calhoun, others, those strategic sounding boards or sounding points that you as board members, you know, would like us to get on paper to be able to take those things to the various agencies who are the sounding boards at the state level. So, the Virginia Association of Counties, there is a memo in here. And this memo is from Governor Youngkin. And it talks about those things that are going to be discussed as significant issue items in the upcoming General Assembly. And speaking with Mrs. Perkins, who is the county attorney who's coming on board, she has experience in terms of assisting with legislative agenda packages. So, I just wanted to bring forth to the board to, to make sure you have on your radar further discussions that we need to have on legislative agenda items for the upcoming state budget. Also, board members, it was brought to your attention earlier in an email from Mr. Wade that there is a community meeting that's going to be held on September the seventh at Mount Nebo. And the purpose of that meeting is to gather citizens' input based on the previous board's discussion on the required one-hundred-acre public green space or recreation area within the project site of the Cavalier Solar Project, which was approved by the board. So, that is that public input meeting on Wednesday, September the seventh, at six o'clock P.M. Board members, also, you know that Sari County is part of the Creative Planning District Commission. And you do have for your information, just the memorandum that came from the interim director on the Creative Planning District. Mr. Elliott serves as the board of supervisors representative on that commission. And this information pertains to the, the district service to Sari County. So, if you look on the back of page one, often at previous meetings, a question has been asked as to what the Creative Planning District is focusing on for Sari County. So, it does highlight some of those things on the reverse side of page one of this memo in terms of the regional efforts that includes Sari County. You're going to hear a lot in the upcoming conversations regarding rural transportation. You're going to hear a lot about housing, both from the Crater PDC and also the Hampton Roads PDC. Housing has been, and also, you're going to hear more again about that, the workforce development as well. That's bringing back to the forefront of the agenda, board members, at the state level and the regional level. So, these are the things that they have been focusing on. As you can see, under economic development and housing, there is a SES committee that has been working on several economic development initiatives. They aware of the study that's upcoming at our Greala Business Park. And of course, the feasibility study. Mr. Elliott, you will be happy to see this here, board members, as pertains to them knowing that we want to explore transportation across the James River. So, these are the things that have been brought up in discussion by economic development and planning at the Creative Planning District Commission. And last thing, in terms of workforce and housing, the governor's summit, the governor's summit, rural summit, is going to be held on October the twelfth and thirteenth in Smithfield. The last time this summit was held, I traveled to Roanoke to attend. So, it's great that it's going to be local. And it's hopeful that at least one board member will be able to attend this, October the twelfth and thirteenth. And the topics of discussion I just spoke of talks about the increase in the rural workforce and how we need to have collaborative innovation in terms of dealing with the workforce crises. I just mentioned the rural housing crisis. So, there's going to be a discussion on problems to solve, solutions to solve the problems in terms of rural housing. The Rural Virginia Broadband Update, check, check, off of our list. So, we'll be there to just listen. So, also, the last time I attended this summit, it was a great opportunity for local elected officials to collaborate with other elected officials for these critical conversations that impact not just Sari County, but for communities like us. So, if there's a board member who desires to attend, please let me know, and we can get you registered to attend that. And that concludes my report on this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, county administrator. Do we have any questions for our administration at this time on any of the subjects that have been talked about or?
I'm sorry, Ms. Little, what was that comment?
I said, did you have any questions or concerns about what has been shared?
Oh, no, ma'am.
Tonight, okay.
I was trying to help Mr. Sheriff Turner. I apologize.
I was just waiting for any questions on that before I proceed with my last item. I said it was my last item, but I apologize, Sheriff Turner. Okay, Sheriff Turner needs to come back for one more item that he wants to bring to the board's attention. So, Sheriff Turner, if you can come forth along with our animal control off? Excuse, Deputy, I apologize, okay. We did animal control at another meeting, I apologize. Deputy Richmond, okay, got you.
Good evening, once again, once again. Feel a little comfortable now, I was telling Deputy Richmond, who said he was a little nervous. I said, I feel a little comfortable now. I'd have been up there a couple times.
No longer nervous.
That's right. But, but nevertheless, I just wanted, just, I'd spoken to Ms. Rollins, I guess, it's been, I guess, a few weeks ago, maybe a month, a month and a half or so ago. We had spoke, Deputy Richmond and myself had spoken to her in regards to some information we found out. I guess it kind of stems back to, I guess, back in May, Deputy Richmond, Deputy Scott, and I had went up to the Police Memorial during Police Week in DC. And we got some information. Somebody approached us about when we had a K-9 program in Sari County. And I said, no, we don't have a K-9 program. And then I tasked Deputy Richmond, I said, Rich, Deputy Richmond, that's a good project for you to look into and see what it all entailed and entails. And so, he, he took the bull by the horn and kind of, and gathered the information and, and came back and with that information, and actually, we have a, it's a K-9 school which is right over in Alawak. And it's American K-9, K-9. And I'm not going to steal Deputy Richmond's thunder. I'm going to let him tell, tell more about the program. But, but he not only tasked it, he also found the funding and all that sort of stuff for the program through his VA benefits and that sort of thing that would actually pay for the nearly nineteen thousand dollars for the, for the K-9 dog and, and the trainer and all that stuff that actually entails for that. And so, we, we presented that to Ms. Rollins. And she asked us to come and present it to, to the board in regards to, you know, we having our own K-9 program here. And this K-9 program is actually a K-9, where we actually do search and rescue. Like I said, what we have far as, you know, someone missing, I think we just had one just the other day on Hog Island Road, we had somebody that wandered off from their, from their home. And we actually also advised them to, to explore our Project Life Saver, which also helps us to find people who may be autistic or have Alzheimer's or other dementia or other kind of things that may wander off. And so, help us to locate those. And so, you know, when, when we started looking at the program, we started looking at all the benefits that it would serve us of having a K-9 and having those capacities to be able to do that here in Sari County with the aging population that we have here. And then also with some of the research that Deputy Richmond has gathered from my calls of how many people we've actually had, who have wandered and been missing here in Sari County, and that sort of thing like that. So, I'm not going to go too much more in depth. I'm, I'm actually let him speak and, and so.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, board, Ms. Rollins. I got my notes here. So, like Sheriff Turner was saying, we're looking into possibly starting a K-9 unit at Sheriff's Office. The reason that we were looking into it, one of the reasons is to offer the citizens of Sari County that search, rescue, tracking, and detection assets in a timely manner. Being that we do, we do have the ability to call on other agencies, but typically, the average response time for those agencies are can be anywhere from two to four hours sometimes, trying to get one of their K-9 handlers. They have to get up, get ready, make it out to our location. And a lot of times by then, it, it kind of defeats the purpose of calling out a tracking K-9 because it's been, you know, hours at that point. So, as Sheriff said, I, I looked into our past calls for services. Since Sheriff Turner has taken office, we've had a hundred and, I put twelve, but this Hog Island call, actually, I did it before the Hog Island, so we've had a hundred and thirteen missing person calls where a K-9 could have been utilized since Sheriff Turner has taken office. Some of the other things that a K-9 would actually provide for the citizens of Sari County asset. of Suri County asset kind of that they can look at, um, it provides a, a really good, uh, public relations thing, it's something that we can bring, um, canine out to events, not just Sheriff's Office events, county events, any events and kind of let people mingle with it, um, being that, um, you know, Hollywood has portrayed the law enforcement canine as, you know, the, you know, the bite dog, that's what everybody thinks about when they think of police canines. Um, that is not what we are looking for here at Suri County, it, it does not make sense here with, you know, the type of community we have to utilize that kind. That kind of canine actually only makes up 5% of total, uh, law enforcement working canine's actual work. The canines that we're looking into would be more of a, the search and rescue and actually approachable to people. We would actually be able to bring the dog out and actually, uh, mingle with crowds with the, with the canine, um, so that, you know, the citizens could actually, you know, also be there and, and enjoy the canine as well. Um, so, the cost of the canine, so cost of canine and training, um, the sheriff said, um, it actually comes out to, for the actual canine, actual training to get certified is nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. Of course, um, as the sheriff said, my VA benefits are actually covering the entire thing, so the VA is actually going to pay to send me to the school, pay for the canine and the training for me and the dog. So I have a couple other breakdowns, so of course there is annual, you know, main, running costs of the canine. Yearly, um, I've gotten with a couple of the other jurisdictions in Virginia that have canine units, how much they, uh, pay per year for medical for their dogs. So for the entire year, they, on average, it's about five hundred and forty dollars per year for medical treatment, that's just, that's the normal checkups and everything that dogs are required to take. Um, also, food, housing, equipment costs and maintenance training. So, majority of, uh, actually those things have actually, we've reached out, um, with some of the businesses and community members and a lot of them have actually had people willing to, uh, to partner and actually donate some of the things like food, stuff that, of course, housing, the dog would, would stay with the, the canine handler, so the housing would be, you know, wherever the canine handler lives, that's where actually the dog would be stored. Um, maintenance training, so the unique thing and one of the reasons that we have looked into the program over in Isle of Wight, it's actually American K-9 interdiction, is because they actually offer the, uh, maintenance training. So you require 16 hours a month of maintenance training to be a certified canine team in Virginia. They offer it free of cost, so it's actually wrapped up into the total cost of your training for the entire, you know, time that you have that dog, that dog is working, um, the maintenance is actually covered. Then I did a breakdown of just yearly, the upkeep cost, um, that includes, that's just breakdown of medical, food, housing, equipment and, and that training. Um, so it would only cost, um, a department to run a K-9, single dog, K-9 unit a year, five thousand dollars a year to run a single dog. And then, like I said, majority of those costs, we have actually partnered up or have been, are being donated, so which cuts down the total cost by a lot, um, of actually what we would need to have the, uh, the unit running, um, if not completely. So that, that's the plan that we're looking into at this time, is to try to run the unit completely off of donations, um, being that the actual upfront startup cost, almost twenty grand, um, is actually being provided by the VA, so we don't actually have to reach out and, uh, attempt to secure that. Um, and as you go, of course, if you guys have any questions, be more than welcome to answer them.
I just want to say, I, I think this is awesome, I mean, I think that, um, putting in, taking initiative to pursue K-9 unit in Suri County, I think that's, uh, a step moving forward. Um, you know, I mean, I'm a dog lover too, but, uh, but dogs can be utilized for several different reasons and I think you're, you're utilizing it for, for the benefit of Suri County and I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. It's something I'm very passionate about, especially from the reason I got into law enforcement, so it's all an opportunity and, you know, Sheriff Turner has let me, you know, run with it and trying to, you know, do the best I can, so.
Thank you for your service with that.
Thank you.
Any other amendments, board members?
I, I know the value of it, of being a former police officer and working with K-9 units, the, the quicker you get there, the better chances you have of finding somebody with the unit. So I applaud the Sheriff's Department for taking this initiative and I'm pretty sure the board will give you our full support.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, and I, same, I had an aunt that got, went out in the woods and stayed overnight and there was no canine to go look for her, but she was eventually found by a family member, so I have experienced that, um, situation. So thank you, um, I think that's great accomplishment and a great thing for Suri County, thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
All right. That the end of your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, thank you for sharing, um, and I don't think you're asking us for anything tonight, you're just sharing what you, I mean, did you need approval from us tonight or?
I, I think it would be fitting if it's the board's pleasure to just say that you, um, you know, give your consensus and support for the Sheriff Department to establish the K-9 unit. Um, as Deputy Richmond stated, in terms of the costs that's involved, he mentioned five thousand dollars, um, but we still hope to get some of that from donations in amongst the community. If I'm not mistaken, um, Isle of Wight County and Prince George County and some others who have these programs, they get a lot of support and donations from businesses and supporters in the community, um, so that I know this community has supported, um, Sheriff Turner in other endeavors, so we're hoping that's the same, so. Um, and any monetary dollars in terms of the program right now, I, I think they can be just covered from what is already in the budget, but again, since this is a development, then I think they need time to really just, um, get into the program and determine what the exact cost would be and we can certainly advise the board, but that would be the ask tonight to just give your consensus to move forward.
Board, you've heard the request, do we have all of those in favor of consensus to support the, um, K-9, um, program?
I say I do, I move it.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I do.
Nays. Okay, you have the ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carried. And administration's finished?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we will open the floor for public comments and please come forward, give your name and your district and you have three minutes. Thank you. Public comment, period.
I'm Fran Barnes from the Claremont District, I think I'm one of those aging citizens that Sheriff Turner was speaking of, just to throw that out there. I am the Vice President of our Historical Society and I'm here and have just finished my term as President and I'm really here just to sort of update you and tell you just a few things quickly about our, our society. Mary Alma Savage is our new President, we have, um, 240 members right now, about 240 from all across the country, from Alaska, California, quite a few, many, quite a few states. And, um, we also have, Ms. Monahan is now on our board and she's a new, um, new board member, Sarah Seward, who works with the county, Jonathan Judkins manages our Facebook page, so, and we have a, a great variety of members who we appreciate very much. We had a lady come in from Maryland yesterday, uh, two days ago, yesterday, no, and she stayed several hours researching her roughin residence, her roughin family from the 1600s, so we get a lot of interesting visitors there. We are open on Tuesdays and Wednesdays only, we wish we could do different, I wish we could have weekends, but it's, we're all run by, we're run by all volunteers and so we, and we need some young, younger people to come in and, and help us and of course they're, they're working. Uh, but we invite you to come by any Tuesday and Wednesday and occasionally we're hoping sometime the end of this month to have an open house on a Saturday and watch our Facebook page for that kind of thing. Hopefully you all have gotten your, Mr. Bird, I'm not sure you've got a newsletter, uh, because you don't have a label, but we'll get you. Um, I, I'll get you one, I, um, I, we do send one out, complimentary copy out. Um, Ms. Deborah Dawson is our website coordinator and our label maker, so we'll get on that with it. We have four general meetings a year, our next one is September 12th at the Rec Center, Ken Bage from Hopewell is going to be talking about General Jeb Stewart. We have a Native American speaker coming in December, although I think Native American Month is November, we may try to do something different there. And we're very excited about a man named John, an author, John Rayly out of, uh, the Outer Banks, who has said he will come in May of next year. He has a new book out about Andrew, about Andy Griffith that you may have seen that came out in May, uh, and the discussion of Manny, oh, doesn't have anything to do with Suri, but he's quite a historian and we're looking forward to his visit. Um, most of our events are free, he's going to cost us a little bit, you might have to pay a little bit to come in there, but, uh, most of the time we do welcome anyone to come, you don't have to be a member. We are going to have a table at Chip Oaks at the Fall Festival and at the upcoming PowWow, we try to do a community table. And I want to do a little aside about Chip Oaks, I really hope that, I know it's not your jurisdiction, but I hope the board will push for that swimming pool at Chip Oaks to be fixed next year. Um, we really, that's an asset to our county that's really missing for the, for the campers, that I know some campers that go and they miss it. And I think we need to talk, teach swimming lessons with the county, um, we know, we know that that's for the kids. I work in another system tutoring and they, they tut, they do their second grade each year. Of course, they're a little closer in town, but, um, the second graders all get swimming lessons and you're not the school board, I understand, but I think if we can show the, um, Chip Oaks, that we really need that pool. And last, I wanted to say that the Pace family was here, Richard Pace's family, descendants of Richard Pace, he's the 1600s, um, and he's connected with Chenko, the young boy, and they came in the spring and summer and they were just very happy about all the things that Suri offered them. Uh, I want to thank Ms. Rollins, who's gone out for helping get the court, we, we got things kind of cleaned up and straightened up, and Sheriff Turner, who came and escorted them, I was on vacation and he escorted them through the county and made sure everything went well when they came and they went to Smith's Fort, they went to the courthouse grounds, they had lunch at Anna's, they had planned box lunches there and they visited our building, so we were very excited about that and appreciative. And I think those are most of the things, but come by any Tuesday or Wednesday that you can, if you can't come on a Tuesday or Wednesday, we often can, you know, I have a key and I can let you in. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Madam Chair, may I add something?
Yeah.
Well, actually, it's, uh, something I'd like for you to add, Ms. Barnes, membership. If we have, if we have citizens who'd like to join, what's the easiest way to, to actually become a member?
They can go online to our website and there's a form, you can come out Tuesday or Wednesday, it's just twenty dollars, so it's real easy to, um, you can give more, but it's, it's real easy to, just, we just need name and address and email information.
And we still have the lifetime, we have the lifetime membership option?
If you'd like time member, just with that two new lifetime members, it pays a little more, but really good deal for someone younger and who's very interested in history to come and join and be a life member.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos Turner again, no, I'm not coming up your act of braided thing with the Sheriff's Office this time, but I just wanted to come up, because, um, Ms. Barnes, she, um, she brought to memory something, uh, when she mentioned about the pool, um, over at Chip Oaks and, and I just wanted to say on behalf of, you know, all the people who keep coming to me, like I can do, as the sheriff can do something about the pool, I just wanted to come, I think we do need to do something for our, our youth in the community, I think just like the gentleman spoke, um, I think, um, maybe last month about the youth and the sports, um, I think we do, as we look, uh, we had a similar situation down in Wavely with the Wavely Pool when, and I think the county and the town came together and done something to get that pool back up. And, you know, especially with the water and the things that we have here in the county, I mean, you know, nearly thirty some miles of waterfront and, and we all, you know, take advantage of that. And I think our kids need to know how to swim and I think with that being the only pool we have in the county, I think we as a county need to do something to, um, to get the pool fixed so we can, um, our kids can have somewhere to go, as well as the sports, because I think today, somebody mentioned, came to me, um, first thing, you know, in the parking lot at the Sheriff's Office this morning, I was coming in and mentioned that about the pool there at Chip Oaks, as well as, uh, you know, the, um, the football and the sports and the things over there at the Rec, um, needing some lighting and that sort of things like that. And I said, you know, I would, um, express that to Ms. Rollins, which I'm sorry, Ms. Rollins, I hadn't had a chance to, to get to you today, who's been on the firing range all day today, so, um, been out and about, but, but, um, I said I would, you know, speak to Ms. Rollins, but, but, um, when Ms. Barnes, you know, mentioned it, I said, I think this would be a proper, perfect opportunity for me to, to just mention it to the board that, you know, we can kind of really, you know, pour into our youth and, and give them something to do, because like I said, if they don't have something to do, we know they're going to find something to do and we don't want them to find something to do where the Sheriff's Office is having to deal with them. So I would much rather for them to be doing some kind of recreation as it relates to the, you know, swimming or playing football or something like that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'd like to add that I concur with Ms. Barnes too, I, I grew up in Suri County, I, I enjoyed, uh, going to the swimming pool and, you know, I learned how to swim and, you know, it just, it's helpful when you invest in the youth here, uh, produce, uh, future in baseball and all, you know, so, uh, I think it's important that we make decisions that benefit our youth, which also impacts our future, so.
And adults need to know how to swim.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair.
The seniors.
Speak to, uh, what Sheriff Turner just stated, uh, while Ms. Barnes was speaking, I, I spoke with Mr. Bird, I think it's high time for us to look at possibly adding on the indoor pool to our Rec Center that would cover all of those, those items, I think it would be great that we invest in, uh, and it's just throwing things out in the air and the board hasn't decided, but I think it would be great for us to invest in the indoor, indoor pool.
And, you know, you, you think about that, um, partnering with the school system, uh, kindergarten first through 12th, um, you can do some things indoor wise and, uh, that can be partners with, with the students and, and teachers, so I think that would be something moving forward in the future we can look at as a county, I think it's important, um, to consider that.
I do know years ago when they were, uh, putting the plans together for the middle school, it was proposed to have a pool there at that time, uh, for several reasons, it wasn't added, but I think, you know, now we can move to a point where we can look at that investment in our youth and, and adults as well.
I mean, because, and there are a lot of students that, uh, can benefit from swimming scholarships and things of that nature, so we may need to consider those options, you know, moving forward.
Thank you, board members. Other comments, public comments?
Robert Chandler, Beacons Castle.
Good evening, Mr. Chandler.
Good evening, Ms. Little, how are you tonight? I, uh, and the rest of the members, I'd like to make a comment about earlier discussion about economic development within the county. The EDA has a tremendous amount of authority and power for economic development and the county has always underutilized that organization. It would behoove the county to bring the EDA in with the economic development discussions and planning. The EDA actually has more monetary authority than the Board of Supervisors does and that can be utilized, if utilized in the proper way. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Helen Eggleston, Denver and Blackwater District, uh, I just have a question, I downloaded your agenda earlier in the day and there is an item under consent items that I wanted to question, uh, having sat through this meeting, because probably your agenda was updated since this was first published, I don't know, but you approved the consent items as a block. I wanted to ask concerning item number four on it, request for a public hearing to amend the ordinance, um, just a short description of concealed carry on public grounds and government buildings, et cetera. Have you all agreed on a public hearing concerning this amendment or to the ordinance or have you decided on a date? All I wanted to know.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
Mike Eggleston, Denver and Blackwater District, if you do decide on a date, please let us know so I can contact Virginia Citizens Defense League and they'll bring their group down here. If it's on the agenda and all of a sudden it's not, why? Has it been dropped? Is it still on the agenda or what? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if it's the board's pleasure, we can answer the question regarding the date that's being proposed for the hearing.
Yes.
Um, the date.
Hello, great board.
Yes, the date that's being proposed, uh, for the hearing is the first Thursday in October, um, is the date that's being proposed.
It will be advertised in the paper.
And it would be advertised correctly, sir.
Thank you. Any other public comments? We will close public comment period, seeing that no one is approaching. And we want to thank you for your comments. They are noted, and any questions will be answered by administration when it's appropriate. At this time, we will have board comments. And can we start with Mr. Elliott? Have any comments?
Madam Chair, I have no comments. I think we've had a very good meeting on tonight, and we got some pertinent things covered in a nice silver manner with our citizens and the board. So I just commend the board and the citizens for the meeting which we've had tonight.
Thank you. Is it the bird?
Madam Chair, I just want to say that I'm a proud citizen of Surrey County. I'm excited to be able to serve here in Surrey County, Denver District. And I look forward to Surrey County making gradual improvements as we move forward. Also want to thank all the citizens who provided input. Your input does matter. Your ideas do matter. And I think it's important as a board member to make sure we do everything we can to support our citizens that live in Surrey County. Because I think we all want the best for Surrey County. I think it's important that we all do what's best for Surrey County and come together and make decisions that will benefit our beautiful county. So thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moore just left, but I just wanted to say thank you for his staff and services. The sanitation department does a wonderful job, at least the facility that I use on a weekly basis. But I would also like to maybe make a recommendation, if I could, for the board to consider an additional work session. Ms. Little and I had a conversation today, and we went over a couple of action items that we feel that may be appropriate to address. So I would ask that we come up with a date later on, hopefully this month, regarding these action items. And if you'd like, but I can put something out and talk to Ms. Rollins with this list, if you like. But I would request that we look at that if possible.
Okay, board members, you've heard that request. And I concur with Mr. Calhoun on the fact that we do need to have another work session. So I'll just put that out there. Ms. Monahan, I'm not forgetting you.
Okay, good. Are we ready for me or do you want?
Yes, well, we'll.
Madam Chair, just in light of Mr. Calhoun's comments before we move to Ms. Calhoun, I just asked if you're going to do a work session, make it two weeks, at least two weeks from now?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'd like to have it before the next board meeting.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
You know, towards the end of the month or, you know, not the last week of the month. Because that's tough.
No, I think.
I understand. Vacation is important.
It is.
Ms. Monahan?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Little. I wanted to share with the board and the public, I'm not sure if we had shared this before, but we have a group from the Surrey Power Station who has volunteered their time. And they have recently completed a Dominion Energy project at Surrey Elementary School. It was a volunteer project. They were able to rebuild a pedestrian ramp that served one of the outer buildings beside the school. And it has been completed. It looks very nice. And the Surrey Power Station volunteers wanted to thank Dr. Sims and Mr. Wooden, who were gracious enough to allow them to help with that project. And I just wasn't sure if we had shared that with the community, but they did a great job. And I felt like they needed to be recognized for their volunteer work.
Absolutely, absolutely. Virginia Power is a great resource. They are great taxpayers, and those persons who work there, they are, they have their volunteer group, and they have volunteered and did projects in the county through the years. And we're just happy to have them in our midst. And we know that the power plant perhaps will be here a little while longer than we may have thought. And that's okay, because again, they're good taxpayers. And so far, so good, as far as any accidents that may be, could happen. Any other comments? I think we all will agree that we want to have the, my comment is also that this evening was such a pleasant evening. I appreciate everyone who participated. And so those are all of my comments for tonight. We do have one other issue that we may need to look at. Oh, okay. So we have our attorney here with us this afternoon. And we know that the county has recently hired a, or hiring in the process, or have hired a attorney that will serve the county, that'll be present in the county.
Full time.
And in doing so, we had also asked Mr. Hefty if they would stay on, Hefton Wiley would stay on with the county until the date that that attorney came to work here. So Mr. Hefty is here this afternoon, and I know that he's expecting, I think, to stay on until the 19th. And Mr. Hefty, I guess I'm, I don't hope I'm not putting you on spot or anything.
We're glad to do whatever the board wants us to do.
Okay. So there have been some conversation that perhaps we can make it through to the 19th and ask Mr. Hefty to stop his service on tomorrow. Am I correct? That's the pleasure of the board? Or would you like for Mr. Hefty and Wiley to stay on until the new attorney comes on board? That's the question.
I would think to cover ourselves, we would want him on to the 19th at least.
Okay.
In case something should come up. You know, we do have issues out on the table.
We do, yes. Mr. Elliott?
I've been in conversation with Mr. Hefty on this, and he did agree to stay on. But I don't, until the 19th, I don't know if, how this will be financed. If we, just until the 19th or till the end of the month, exactly what's going to be required of the county to maintain our legal service until the 19th, from a financial standpoint.
We'd be glad to prorate our monthly fee to the 19th if that works.
Mr. Bird?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure right now. I'm really not. We had a conversation earlier today. I'm not sure. I don't know.
Ms. Monahan?
My main concern, Chair Little, is as always, I don't want us to not have any legal representation for a day, for a half a day. So I'm in agreement with whatever we work out, as long as we don't have a lapse of legal. We need an attorney at every, it's, as we've said before, it's like insurance. We don't want to be without it and get caught in a situation. So I, I'm in agreement with whatever we decide, as long as we do not have a lapse of legal counsel.
I would agree with you and Mr. Calhoun. So I think it's kind of consensus that Mr. Hefty, without even, we've, the vote has been held, I think. So unless board members want to have a vote, do you want to vote for this? I think we've all have spoken our concerns and what would we like to have. Mr. Elliott, for the 19th, Mr. Wiley, I'm Hefton Wiley, working until the 19th with a prorated payment?
Madam Chair, in light of the 17 years that Hefton Wiley has provided to Surrey County in the discussion that have taken place tonight, I would be in favor of them retaining them until the 19th.
Thank you.
I support it.
Okay. So I think we have a motion and a second, and all of those in favor of Hefton Wiley remaining?
Madam Chair, I didn't make a motion. That was just, that's a comment.
Okay, well, would you make a motion? I think it's in line to make a motion, because it is money involved.
All the board members?
Don't need to if you don't want to.
We, I don't think we need to. We just need to agree.
Right.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. We all agree?
You don't need to motion.
Okay, thank you.
As long as you pay the bill.
That's why we have an attorney down there. Thank you.
With that being said, Madam Chair, I would just like to personally thank the Hefton Wiley's offices and Ms. Powell and yourself, of course, for your support for this county. You've been there, every phone call I've had, answered all my questions, and I really thank you. And we're going to miss you. But best wishes to you and your new endeavors.
Thank you. I just want to thank the board and the community and the staff. I've enjoyed working with Surrey, and Danielle has too. So we'll miss you as well. But you're getting a good person in Lola. She's a very good attorney and has been a friend for a long time. And so you will get a very good service with Lola.
Thank you, Mr. Hefty. And I concur, when I first got elected, I think, was that when you started with us? Or were you working before I was elected?
I came in 2004. I think you were already on the board.
Oh, okay. Well, I have certainly been thankful for you being there as our attorney, knowing that we had coverage, because I know nothing about law. So thank you. We will miss you, but we wish you the best, you and your business. And if we need you, we know you're going to still be there. And we can maybe perhaps if we need to call you. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other business, any other, am I missing anything? Okay. Oh, okay. That was what you had written down.
We're going to decide on a meeting date or?
Oh, yes, we do.
Okay.
And also, board members, we don't have a vice chair. So I don't know if you want to do that this evening or wait until the next meeting. It's up to you all.
Discuss it at the work session, maybe.
Okay. Is that all right, board members?
Vice Chair?
Okay.
Work session?
At the work session?
I think that's fine. Did you say some of the discussion of the meeting date?
Yeah, we do need to.
Yeah, work session, yeah.
Are we doing that right now?
Yes. We need to do that now.
Madam Chair, I'm available anytime the week after the 18th. That's 18th to get to 19th. Through the rest of the month, I'll be available.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rollins is checking account for us.
I would prefer that week as well, but not on Tuesday, the 20th.
Any other dates that are not good for anybody?
I don't know.
No beach days?
Not that one. The week before.
Okay.
That week is fine with me.
Okay. So are you looking at the 21st, which that's Wednesday, or the 22nd, that Thursday? Which date? Because we would need to continue the meeting to the work session.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday will be fine with me.
Does six o'clock work for board members instead of seven?
Yes, it works for me.
Okay, so the 21st is 6:00 P.M.?
Send a reminder, please.
Yes, absolutely.
Definitely. All right, so do we need a motion for that or is this consensus here?
No.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair, move adjournment.
Until?
Until the 20th, 22nd.
21st.
21st.
It's six o'clock P.M.
Six o'clock P.M.
And I second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Nays, hearin' none, ayes have it. Thank you, board members.